All right, let's go into all to order. And Gina, I guess you're gonna do roll call?
Yes. President Michael Schaefer.
Here.
Vice President James Ferryman.
Present.
Secretary Arlene Schaefer.
Present.
Assistant Secretary Robert Uten.
Here.
And Director Arthur Perry.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, public comments, this is a time set aside for folks in the audience to speak on items within our jurisdiction that are not on the agenda. Neither of you two wish to speak?
[laughing]
All right, seeing nobody else, we'll close public comments. And Scott will go to item one, the Code Enforcement Officer Report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ed Roberts will be giving his report.
Good morning, Mr. Schaefer, members of the board. Ed Roberts, I'll be presenting your Code Enforcement Officer Report for the district, March 2018. In summary, during the course of March, I conducted a series of 11 scavenging investigations, spread out sporadically throughout the community. For the reference and for the board's benefit, there's an at-a-glance map at the rear of my packet that I put together for you. Kind of highlights the locations. Just in real quick summary, all of them were located on the west side of town, west of the 55 freeway. There were none on the east side. This time, you'll see a proliferation of them up on the north end. Kind of, I believe there were three around Pepper Tree, Royal Palm area. And there were two in the northwest corner of the town, up around Iowa and Nevada Avenue. The other ones were localized pretty much on the west end of town, south of Victoria Avenue, kind of around Senator Daryl Street. Does the board have any questions regarding the scavenging investigation? Yes, sir?
Another question, the two on Pepper Tree and Royal Palm, was it all three different people?
Three separate individuals, sir. And it's kind of difficult to surmise from the map. They're actually located in the alleyway. All of these occurred to the rear. These are all multifamily communities, apartment buildings that border that alleyway, and the trash carts are placed to the rear of the properties.
It seems like it's, like they're working together because they're in only, you know, like four or five places behind, you know, parking each other.
Yes, Mr. Perry. A couple of the factors that may influence that, too, is the fact that the area's kind of isolated. It's removed from public view because the alleyway runs to the rear of the auto dealerships and to the rear of those apartment communities, so kind of out of the public view.
I know exactly what you're talking about. That's where my office is.
It's interesting because so many, they're all, the city had made all of them do enclosures. So these guys are actually going into the enclosures and opening cans or were they open cans?
These are open cans, sir. Because I am familiar with the trash enclosures. Those are mid-block on Pepper Tree, but on that radius where, kind of in the vicinity of your office, you'll notice a lot of those trash carts are actually placed directly along the roadway, the abut to the roadway.
Yeah, I had one of the, one of the owners of one of the apartments come over to my office because he knew I had some connections with the city. He wanted to know why the city had, it's, it's a code, there's a city code that says that every, they're all supposed to be enclosed. So apparently, some of the owners of those units must not, well, you know, because of the rocks.
Well, I walked, I walked there a lot, and I'd say a third of them have trash enclosures. And then there are just cans everywhere.
Right. And those properties, in my opinion, are probably better candidates for trash bins. I believe the issue that's out there is parking. There's very, very small amounts of parking, and the trash bin would probably be very difficult to situate on the property because there's just not a whole lot of space where they could accommodate it and provide an enclosure for that trash bin. So...
The ones in Nevada and Iowa, did they, in your expert opinion, appear to be homeless people?
Yes, sir. I've actually had correspondence with Scott, and we've chatted about it as far as doing outreach. And I have, as a matter of fact, reached out to the city staffers in reference to this. You'll remind, I sent a photograph to you, seeing if this was the individual that had been brought to your attention by the community member, and it in fact was. So we did contact that man. We did offer resources to him, and they were promptly denied. Doesn't mean we won't continue the homeless outreach for them. You know, we'll try to put them in touch with city staffers and resources. Ultimately, onus falls on them, you know, if they want to take advantage of that or And, yeah, I'm sorry. Are there any other questions regarding the scavenging activity in the city? Okay. Moving forward, sorry, let me scroll through. Eleven was the amount, kind of a high amount for the community. Bear with me here. And for the trash container enforcement, series of, there were about 102 that I contacted during the course of the month, and no issues. I've had a couple resurgence, a couple repeat offenders, but by in fact, you know, a couple months or three months have gone by since the last contact with them, we just handle it as a recurrence, but not a new violation. That should conclude my presentation. Any questions?
Okay. Joe?
Thank you. My pleasure.
Go to item two, the organic tonnage report, Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Actually, item twos and threes are just filed only, and staff's available to answer any questions.
Any questions from anybody?
Maybe just a comment, you know, we've been seeing generally the organic tonnage going up. Last couple of months, you know, it's begun to maybe go down. Well, it has gone down, maybe it's beginning to stabilize. So I think that's probably due to the newsletter and the website, and people, you know, kind of getting into the process, so...
I think, too, now that the weather's spring, we're gonna have more people putting organics in the, you know, cutting the grass more often or cutting trees and whatever.
I think there's just less grass to cut, maybe a little less.
Any other questions for staff on the two reports? Okay. Item four.
Thank you, Mr. President. Gina Teriano will be giving his report.
Gina.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Item number four is the consideration of applicants for the Citizens Advisory Committee. This is a committee of residents within the district service area that will learn about the district and then have the opportunity to meet and discuss district issues and give the board recommendations. At this time, the district has received 10 applications for the committee, and these applications are all attached to the staff report for your review. And the applications will be brought to the Board of Directors meeting on April 26 for appointment and nominations. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Do we have a minimum and a maximum?
The minimum for a quorum would be six, and the maximum that we set was 11.
So we have to look at the candidates and then make a decision on which ones we would like to have in it?
Yes.
Or is that the plan?
Mm-hmm.
Do we want to do that at a, I mean, do we want to do that at a study session, or do we want to do it at the board meeting?
The nominations will be at the board meeting. So right now, they're just being presented for you to review the applications and then make nominations at the board meeting.
You know, on the report, it was good report, and I understood it, except for this part. Each one of us gets to nominate somebody? Is that it?
Um, I believe...
Each person nominates.
But is it just one, or...
We can stick to similar guidelines like the city does, where the board member can appoint two committee members?
At this point, though, we have 10 applicants, and we have 11 positions. I mean, I've read, I've gone through and read these. Everybody has an interest in it, and they've all expressed kind of what we're looking for, so...
They really follow.
There's some, there's some pretty sharp people in here.
I know.
And then there's some kind of tacks in here that they're okay. They're nice people.
They're all interested.
They're all interested, and they all, they all expressed wanting to be involved, and I think that's what we're looking for.
Have not, is the application process closed, or is it still open?
We did close it as of Monday.
Monday?
So we're just recognizing them, they're not going to go on telling about themselves publicly?
Well, I think, like President Schaefer said, you have the 10 candidates here. I mean, if there was like 20 candidates, you know, and you had to narrow it down to 10, then that'd probably be a good opportunity to interview them. But like President Schaefer says, you have 10, looks like 10 very qualified candidates here, and so, you know, it's at your pleasure, you know. You know, the goal was to get 11, and we have 10, so we can appoint all 10, or if you just want to appoint six, it's up to you. But our goal is to get 11, so we're very pleased to have 10.
I would think that seeing all of us have kind of gone through and looked at what there is, that President could just say, you know, we all find that unanimously that you're all qualified.
Well, I think at the board meeting, that may or probably will happen. I mean, unless, unless one of us finds somebody in here that's not qualified or doesn't meet the criteria, then we could talk about it. But my guess is we'll probably just approve all 10 of them.
When does staff intend to have the first meeting with the selected candidates?
We really haven't had that discussion yet. I think what we try, what we try to find and do is find a day and time that can accommodate all of them, maybe in the morning, afternoon, or maybe in the evening. We'll have to see what's accommodating to them. So we'll reach out to them and say, hey, what works best for you? And then we'll set that day and time.
Is the regular meeting, you mean?
Yes, yes.
We'll have a representative from the board at the meeting, too. I mean, once we establish...
I think the policy says President Schaefer, if I remember, but the board could always appoint someone else. I believe, we'll double-check that, but I think it says the president. But if the board wants to appoint someone else, that's...
Can the board choose and not the president?
Absolutely. Absolutely. We'll have some further discussion.
But Vice President Ferryman is correct, there would be at least one representative from the board on the committee.
I could see us, if it's okay with you guys, rotating it. I mean, it doesn't have to be...
Or multiple ones.
I was gonna say that...
Or even two of us could go.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I would think it should be like a three or four-month period, because you don't want to change every meeting because you wouldn't be up to date on what's happening.
Yeah, change like quarterly.
Yeah, quarterly.
Well, I think they meet, they meet quarterly at least.
Or you could do it, it could be like an ad hoc committee. Go with two, and then one stays on for the next one, you know, just have a rotation that way.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? That way, yeah. Just a thought.
Something also to consider when we bring this back in April is to give staff direction of what topics you want the community to talk about, what's the first item you want them to discuss.
Do you want direction now? Because as far as I'm concerned, the letter we got and, you know, the district, going to districts, should be their very first topic. We've talked about that for a long time.
I thought that was included.
Yeah, it was included in the report, but that would be my guess.
First couple of meetings, I believe, it's just gonna get them to familiarize about our operations, maybe take them on tours, get them, you know, to know how operation they have, the background about the operations. And then, and then if that's the board's pleasure, then we'll start talking about district voting, districts.
Have any of them signed up for the tours that we established already?
Yes, about seven out of the 10 have signed up.
That's good. Shows a good interest.
Yeah, really good. I think from a staff, I mean, as you're doing the, you know, the initial meetings and stuff, you need to start getting familiar with the departments in here, too. Like, one maybe, maybe Rob could be there, and then the next one, Steve, could be there. And I mean, so you guys will rotate that through, too, I'm sure. Okay. Okay, so then, April meeting will be making, are you going to notify the applicants that were taking that action at the April board meeting?
They've been notified.
We'll like meeting, yes.
Right. Good. Anything else? Good job. I know this was kind of touch and go for a while, but you guys have done a great job getting that move in, and I think it's gonna be really, really good timing. So, good, thanks, Gina. All right, item five?
Thank you, Mr. President. Actually, item five and six, Rob Hemers will be giving his report, so turn it over to Rob.
Thank you.
Thank you, bud.
Thank you, Mr. President and board members. Scott actually prepared both of the staff reports, which is, if I had them, might be done. First one is the reopening of the WDR waste discharge requirements. Generally speaking, there was supposed to be a triennial, or once every three-year, opening of the WDR, which is what we follow in managing our sewer system, meaning that it contains in a comprehensive manner all the components that are necessary for a successful sewer system management program. Includes legal authority, capacity, fog programs, your fee rate to make sure you charge enough money to fund the improvements that you need. So we here in Orange County started in our own WDR in 2002, meaning we were the first ones to have, it was just a regional one in our region, and that was in 2002. Then by 2006, they adopted the statewide WDR, and we have been working as a group, our little Orange County WDR group, since 2002. And I'm the third chair of that group. The first few chairs were from OCSD. Nico Rontes was the first, and Patrick McNelly was the second. So obviously, comprehensive sewer system management is the goal, and that will hopefully result in the reduction of sewer spills, because there's millions of gallons of raw sewage making its way to the Pacific Ocean on a regular basis from overflows. So the purpose of the WDR is to make sure everyone follows through in building a comprehensive management plan. So once before, the state water board opened the WDR for comments, and when they did it that time, they came out with the revision and said, how about this? And there was a firestorm reaction. It was very draconian changes to the program that would have significantly increased the time and energy that agencies need to dedicate. After going back and forth with all the NGOs and agencies and state water board, back and forth, back and forth, they decided to leave the WDR alone at that time because there were just too many agencies that hadn't even enrolled yet. And to this day, we go to some training programs and say, who, what agency in this room does not have a fog program? And two or three agencies will say, we don't. So we still don't really have everyone on board. But they wanted to make some changes. These changes don't look so bad in terms of if they can follow through and what their goals are. And Scott listed those under the analysis section of the staff report, and they're very good goals. They're just trying to make it simpler. What's sitting out there as a potential big-ticket item is reporting of private sewer overflows. At this point, we don't have to report them. We don't really even have to respond to them, but once the wastewater gets into the public right away, yes, we're supposed to. But that is one of the big items. There still are a significant number of private sewer lab SSOs that causes a continuous contamination of our waterways. So whether we like it or not, that's where the state board is headed. And we, as the Coast to Mesa Sanitary District, have chosen not to report private spills because we believe it would be held against us during an audit or some other time when you are in front of the water board. So basically, there, the eight goals are shown there. CASA, C-A-S-A, California Association of Sanitation Agencies, has now gotten involved and written some letters to the state board about, one of them was to get the two-year self-audit deadline meshed in better with the five-year SSMP recertification. Make it so that the dates land on each other. Simple things like that. So in this case, rather than come out with the revised WDR, they're more along the lines of having workshops to say, these are what our goals are, let's talk about this. So it's a much more friendly approach. And you do have a letter from, a joint letter from CASA, BACWA, and SCAP. And that, that joint letter to the water board states the position of those three agencies. And it's a very well-written letter. It will come down to the gravity of the changes, meaning how far are they going to go, and are we going to accept it? So at this point, it's very early in the process. There are workshops. We do have the, there are some attachments that are worth looking at. And we, as our Orange County WDR group, we're monitoring it, and we, as a group, have written letters in the past or urged our agencies to write letters on behalf, because when something comes up that we don't believe is fair, we like to say so. So this, that is a quick overview of what this is all about. And as I said, the WDR require, that's the regulation that requires us to have SSMP, Sewer System Management Plan. That Scott brought before the board when he was speaking of the self-audit. Self-audit and recertification of the SSMP, that's all part of the WDR. So there's the second part of the WDR called the MRP, Monitoring and Reporting Program. The last time when they had the firestorm and all that, they did revise the MRP because they realized that they could do that at staff level. So they revised that, and they added more requirements like testing the water after a SSO of 50,000 gallons or greater that made it through quarters of the state. So that's a quick overview. And through CASA, since we're members of CASA, you could be involved in this from that standpoint, or you can just watch it unfold as we bring back information and reports such as this. But Scott's, while we're in the staff report and the re-attachments, pretty much tell the story.
We're not members of CASA anymore.
No? No, not anymore? Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, just two real quick things. I was reading about, in here, about the regulation of private systems, and they were talking about, they want to regulate larger private systems. And I think the letter from CASA and the others said that, where do you draw the line as to what's larger? Within our jurisdiction, the largest system, private systems, and I've tried to guess, would be like the Fairgrounds, Fairview State...
Seegerstrom.
Seegerstrom, yeah. So those would be, we don't report their SSOs.
We, we, we report SSOs. We're responsible for reporting an SSO that's caused by our line, meaning if our line, it doesn't matter if a private property owner pushed roots and threw all this stuff in the system and it blocked it up. If our pipe is blocked, it's our spill.
Okay.
So if the private pipe is blocked, then it's private spill. That's usually where the threshold lies. As far as what's big and small, we also got an email from Gil Vasquez. He's staff, he's a PE on the staff at the water board. And he did send out an email straight, right along the lines of what you said, President Schaefer, that private collection systems, large private collection systems should be added. So what he asked for, Gil Vasquez, was, send us all your large private companies that would qualify for the WDR. The threshold is one mile of sewer or more. So one mile of pipeline in the ground. And I believe the biggest is probably Fairview State Hospital. That sewer goes all the way up at 18 inches in diameter, and it's a few miles worth. But one state agency to another, they ignored the WDR. That's what a lot of...
I remember you saying that before.
Right. They didn't clean their sewer up until a whoodoo's back.
Now, we don't report private SSOs, but do we track them and keep log of the ones that are reported to us?
I don't know to what extent Steve Condo and the field crews do, but maybe he makes notes. We do try to keep some track so that if there's a repeat offender, we know to go after them.
That's kind of where I was going.
And so they asked us for a list of private collection systems, but we're gonna leave that alone for a while and see what happens. It would be nice if other arms of the state, such as State Hospital, would follow through regulations that are proffered by another part of the state.
Realistically, the Fairgrounds is state, is the state also, so they're...
Right.
Okay. I have about several questions. One is, you said Aqua, CSDA...
Aqua.
Yeah, and SCAP. These are the letters. Now, does the regional participate in this, too, for letters?
What you mean, regional? Anybody can participate. The WDR is, any government agency with a mile of sewer or more is required to enroll in the WDR.
So these are just letters right now?
Yes.
And nobody has really put together any kind of a bill saying this is, because if they all feel a certain way, that they...
We do not really have a revised WDR to say, here's what they want.
Okay.
So they've been going over general terms and discussions over things that they want. And they're trying to build a consensus from ground up.
Before. Okay, the other question, what, comment, really, is that when we were doing Fairview State Hospital Developmental Center, at that time, probably about two or three years ago, we, maybe more, we had talked to them about their sewer that goes under Harbor Boulevard?
Yes.
And that, you know, they needed to bring, upgrade it and so forth. And of course, they did nothing on it. Do you think it's time for us to write another letter and say, you know, all these years, and we're just going over everything, and maybe, you know, a comment of...
That actually happened, Director Schaefer. They woke up one day and said, let's, our chief engineers leaving for one reason or another, they brought in a new guy, they bought a tractor truck, and whether they're regularly cleaning or not, I don't know, but they have a tractor truck, so at least they look like they are participating to some degree. So we would have to do another analysis to find out exactly what they are and aren't doing. We still know for a fact that they've got some areas still open to the sky that lead to sewer system. And they're large areas, too big to put covers over. So we've been back and forth with that one on them for a long time. They're definitely one of the big sources of inflow.
I think it's important for us to stay on top of that, because that's, something happened, and it's our fault, and so, you know...
Well, kind of some history, Director Ferryman and I were with the Orange County Sand District when this process was conceived. And it was conceived to try to mitigate the, a paragraph in the 1972 Clean Water Act that required no sanitary sewer overflows. And we were concerned at that time, the general manager and board, that someday Congress would wake up and realize, you know, and... Congress would wake up and realize, you know, and, and want that, want that very owner's requirement implemented. So, the WDR was, was created with the Regional Water Quality Control Board and Orange County Sand District to give the nation data on, first regionally and then statewide, you know, to understand and, and, and to eventually substantially mitigate the number of SSOs so that, you know, we would stay off, off congressional periscope. I, I, I would like to, there, there was a large number of staff involved, my staff, Rob, Rob was a participant from the beginning. I'd like to compliment Rob, you know, on staying with the process. And, you know, I've monitored the WDR meetings at times, because they discuss a lot of interesting topics. And Rob has been, you know, I think this agency owes Rob a great debt of gratitude. He wrote the original template for the SSMP and was involved in, you know, the, some research that, by EEC, one of our contractors, to do, understand grease mitigation practices. So, Rob has stayed with the, stayed with the system and, you know, been Chair of the system. And so, this agency's been very actively involved, along with Orange County Sand District. But Rob in particular has been, you know, one, the one, one of the ones that has stayed with this. But there's a lot of very interesting wastewater professionals go to these meetings. And it's a very dynamic group and, you know, they understand what the problems are and they make significant progress. And are listened to, you know, at, at the state level. So, thank you very much, Rob.
Welcome. Well-stated. And yes, I've stuck with everything since day one. And as I said on the third chair, and our purpose as a group is to share information. When the original WDR came out, you had to do all these things. You had to make a FOG program. You had to evaluate your capacity. You had to write an SSMP. So, we as steering committee members, we each picked something that we could help other agencies with. So, I drafted the first regular-sized collection system SSMP. And OCSD did one for large agencies. And that was the template for others. There were some other people who drafted the FOG ordinance, and they shared that with everybody. That made Alan Burns' job a lot easier. So, we tackle these things one by one. And we will do the same thing if the changes mandate that. It does say in here, the very, very much are seeking input from the profession before drafting any potential changes or revisions. So, the state Water Board is out there asking questions, haven't made the revisions yet, but they don't want to do what they did last time.
Rob, how do they treat the school district? Because they, they've got like a little less than 40 sites in the city. And, you know, they're all hooked up to the sewer and, do we have any reciprocal arrangement with them?
We treat them just like a private property owner, because they own the land and they have their own sewer system. But that's another state agency that I don't know whether they're doing anything. I, I have not seen one item of a WDR or met one person who's in charge of, or does anything specifically sewer-related from a school district.
Well, there was that thing at the Staxia.
Yeah, they have their own, they're just a pumping station, but you're talking about the sewer line with the stodder.
Right. I, I don't see people televising their own system. They're not coming to us saying, what should we do about this? And how do I do that? So, I just don't think they're doing anything.
Good item for the liaison committee is to maybe offer to the school district some help if they would like to have, I mean, we could do it, right?
It, it's certainly something to bring up during these talks is that, do as I say or do as.
Do as I say. It's like being a parent, just do as I say.
As you do do. Okay. On the same topic, what is the status of Costa Mesa Golf Course and Mesa Verde? Are they private or are they in our, in our system?
They're both inside our jurisdiction. So.
Because I've been by and I've seen overflows at Costa Mesa Golf Course, never at Mesa Verde, but at Costa Mesa.
I have too.
You know what I mean?
Especially that restroom out on the 15th hole on Mesa Linda.
Well, one of the things is that, when they have a SSO, it's so far from where people are that we, we don't see it. When San Ana Country Club was remodeling their sewer and they left the trenches open and the pipe open during those huge rains last year, it just, millions of gallons of rainwater went in the sewer. So, it can get bad.
Yeah, that's, that's, you know, because I've seen them.
I have too.
I've lived there a couple times.
So, at this point, we're going to keep you posted and with all correspondence and see how it goes, whether it starts to get rough or stays smooth throughout.
I appreciate the report, because I learned a new term, de minimis?
De minimis, yes.
Never seen that before in all my years, so I, I'm going to use de minimis for some of my stuff.
You should try and say. You should probably read the legal insurance stuff.
I figured.
What they're, what they mean there is that it's such a small spill that just forget it, like maybe 10 gallons.
I think the report said, under 10 gallons was the, the de minimis threshold or something? Yeah.
So, if they did that, you'd see, you'd see a whole bunch of 10-gallon spill reports. Everybody will land on that number.
My wife does that on a regular basis in the laundry room. I think she does a de minimis spill.
Scott's done a wonderful job actually writing sections of SSMP for us, so even though I wrote the original, he's taken the reins. And we did win Sewer System of the Year, and we did have a year with no SSOs. And he's got great management here, good focus on the sewer system, understanding that you have to fund these things to get them done. And we've been doing them. We have a fantastic force main program and everything else. So, and we've learned how to stretch the dollar.
Well, I think with, neither end should shortchange. You guys are a team, and I mean, with your knowledge of this stuff and what you bring to the table and Scott's ability to elaborate it and to put it forward, you guys work as a good team, and I, I think we all appreciate that.
We have, and Scott's built a great field crew. They have a good yard, good people out there. They're in a platinum league building, fantastic. So, we do, and we have a lot of camaraderie, so we have a great team, no doubt about it.
Question. Okay, anything else on item five? Want to talk about updated SSO notification guidelines or is that part of it?
We haven't, I have not touched on that yet, but this is, yes, this is part of it. And Scott wrote the staff report too, did a very nice job. So, the two attachments you have are, is another one of examples of our, our WDR steering committee. One of the steering committee members prepared this. And it's a living document, it's been going since 2002. And it is a briefing on what reporting you have to do based on what kind of spill you have. We have categories one, two, and three. Those are all agency-related spills. And you also have private lateral. But this tells you how much time you have to notify, who you have to notify, the reporting requirements, when the written report is due, and it gives all the phone numbers. So, this is an extremely valuable document. And one of them is in abbreviated form, that's a one-pager, and the expanded form is two pages. Same document, but just with more information so you can understand it a little more thoroughly if you want to look at the expanded form. So, we do adhere to this, our guys do. One thing they did do was, under the notification context, it was all set up for, one call does it all. The OES, Office of Emergency Services. Technically speaking, that's what the Water Board wanted. Call one number and they'll notify everybody. However, they're up in Sacramento, and they're not in a hurry to notify Orange County Healthcare Agency or Orange County Public Works. So, we know that we do that. We make those phone calls. We call everybody. We have a spill, not only do we call OES, but we call OCHA, that's the healthcare agency, and OC Public Works. We even got to the point where we put water quality monitoring phone numbers on here, although the regs are not very explanatory and give you zero direction on what to sample and when and how many, when to start and stop. There's no guidelines on sampling. But if you have a 50,000 gallon or greater spill that gets in the water, you have to do water quality monitoring. So, we have contacts for that, and they're ready to go. So, you would probably develop your own program based on the particulars. So, this is a great tool, as Scott wrote in the staff report, it was updated because a lot of people from healthcare retired and their phone numbers were the same, but we added some more names to the phone number. So, this is, if we do what's on here, we can never go wrong. Although we did do that with our big spill and it still got called on the card.
Yeah, yeah. I know OES is in Sacramento, but you know the Orange County OES with Kelly Hubbard? Would that be a source for us to utilize or are they?
Kelly, Kelly Hubbard and gang, we, we don't, we use, our local source is really somebody like We Rock. We Rock took it upon themselves to be a clearinghouse of abilities and equipment. So, if we're in a sewer spill and we need to dam something up or we need to start driving piles, We Rock's got all those phone numbers and they'll make the calls for us. One of the important things we did was, Scott took us all through a, opening up the EOC, what to do during a period of emergency. Because if one guy tries to do everything on his cellphone, not going to, not going to work. So, very important to have others and make it a team effort. But, so, we, we do use We Rock on a number of occasions. And OC Public Works has a list of companies that can get into the flood control channel and do things in there. And so, that's another, that's another resource we have.
I like the notice, it says, for the Orange County Healthcare Agency, please call down the list and tell someone is contacted. What if you get to number four and you haven't contacted? I mean, what if they're all, that's, I, I assume that number on the right, that after-hours number is the number, the main number anyway, so hopefully someone will get contacted.
Right. OES gives you a, a, an incident number. So, if you don't have that number, you're in trouble.
Any questions for Rob on, on this one?
Good report.
This is really helpful, Rob, thank you.
Thank you. Helped you. Scott deserved it.
That's great. Okay, that concludes our items of study. We'll go to oral communications and director comments. Directors, Bob?
Well, as you all know, I'm working, I'm making the rounds, talking to all, all the special district, the independent special districts that have a vote in, in the LAFCO. I'm learning a lot, listening, you know, listening to the other people speak. There are now three or four, I guess, is it four? There's four people running for the, the commissioner's seat.
Voting.
And there's, the voting seat. And there's two of us running, Jim Pissler is the incumbent and, and me. You know, I'm pleasantly surprised as I get around to many of the agencies, you know, with my background in wastewater, you know, I, I know many of the, many of the directors or trustees or, or whatever. You know, I've reviewed their strategic plan. There is a strategic planning session tomorrow morning at eight o'clock that I intend to, that I, that I will attend. You know, I've reviewed their agendas. They're, they're not a real complicated agency. You know, in the last six months, you know, they, they basically did the kinds of things we do, they elected officers, they had an audit, they, you know, they did, did the kind of normal things that, that an organization does. And then, then they had one, one item that was a detachment. It was a tenth of an acre transferred from City of San Ana to Orange, you know, which is a, a long process for them. They did a detachment. It was a, both, both, both cities agreed to the process. And must, they must, they have residents also, and then they did an attachment, and then they did a secret determination, you know, so that their big item in the future, it's going to be, they're going to begin the MSR process. They hired a consultant in the past to help them do workshops. They've gathered that information, they're ready to go. This, this, the alternate position and the regular positions will be seated in, in July. You know, I'm, I'm looking forward to sitting on that, on that commission.
Sure.
Um, but it's been a fun process, you know, and as I've studied, learned. My education and experience fit well with many of the special districts. You know, and it's good to get out there and see old friends. So, appreciate all the staff's support. I, it, it's a brutal process. I, I've been to, I think, eight, nine, I have to get to 25s. You know, so, and try to keep my speech fresh.
Sort of joke.
So, thank you very much for allowing me the opportunity to learn about it and, but, and quite likely end up as the LAFC, OC LAFCO alternate director, so thank you again.
Thank you, Rob. Just a couple of quick things from me, well, actually, I, I think it's maybe public knowledge, you know, I'm, as the Director of the Special District Risk Management Authority, two weeks ago, we accepted the resignation of Greg Hall, our CEO. So, I, I think they announced that at your.
Yes.
CSDA meeting last week.
Yes.
Greg left for personal reasons, and so we're now, we have a conference called AMAR to start the executive recruitment process. So, we'll be actively and quickly trying to fill his role as CEO for CSDA. I will be in San Antonio, I think I told you already, San Antonio next week for the risk manager, the Worldwide Risk Management Association Conference. So, hopefully I'll bring back some tidbits for SDR May for us.
I just want to add on to that, that CSDA was very concerned about what happened. And we just want to be sure that the risk management and us stay as partners, because we've talked to different members, as well as yourself, and about this, because we have such a good thing going on.
That will continue.
We want to continue this partnership based on your interviews and what you go through one way or the other. Aside from that, as you know, I just got back from CSDA, and I'll hold that until our public hearing, because I have the agenda for that. And then, I, I'm going to go to the advanced leadership with Art and Jim on the 15th through the 17th in Monterey, which is great for us, because it just puts. which is great for us because it just puts us on a higher plateau in being able to be involved and know everything. And even though we've been through the series, it seems like every time you go to an advanced one, you learn more about the Brown Act, more about different things, that are new laws that come to effect that you don't know. So it's not like you can erase it and say, well, I've done that. So, and then after that, I come back and then go to a board meeting with CSDA. So I'll go right up after that. Up for that. And that's it. Aside from, let's see, what else? That's about it.
I have one, one other quick thing, just so you guys know. Got an email from a, a resident last week questioning why we have study sessions. He says, why do you, why do you guys need to have a study session? And I explained to him that, you know, we, we get a lot of information disseminated here that I think better prepares us for making the decisions at board meetings. And it, you know, if we didn't do study sessions, our board meetings would- Much longer. And I think we're very efficient and transparent in getting the work done. And I responded to him in that manner. And he came back and he says, oh, he says, that makes a lot of sense. Thanks for explaining it. So I think doing these study sessions does help us a lot, making decisions at board meetings.
Absolutely.
Yeah, this is, you know, much, not easier, but it's nice to be able to interact with all the staff in a study session when we get our questions out. So, anyway, I thought, I thought you'd all be interested in that.
I think that's good. And not only that, but it gives us a heads up on different things that come up that we're aware of before we just suddenly have a public hearing.
Yeah. Hey, Jimmy?
Tomorrow night, I'm going to have a little get-together for Mayor Earl.
Candidate.
And everybody's invited to Los of Costa Mesa. So we'll have a light dinner.
What does that mean?
I wasn't looking at you.
I live in that house. What time, what time is it?
Six to eight.
Six to eight. Thank you. Art?
Good meeting.
You're off to vacation next week, right?
Well, the school is, but I'll still have practice.
Why did they do spring breaks so late?
I don't know. We're the only one, I think, that's this late. Like Temecula was out for two weeks.
I know. My Temecula school is-
And then in our lake, you know, there's four different spring breaks in our lake. So it's difficult for scheduling, but it's good. That's where I can go to the Monterey Conference because there's no practice. I have somebody else covering the Monday practice.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
I'm, I'm taking Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
Yeah, that's good.
And we're, I guess lastly for me, we're sad that Nalani can't be with us today under the circumstances and hope her travels were safe and best to her family and losing her grandmother. Hopefully she'll be back soon safely and everything taken care of. So we miss her. Okay, with that, I will adjourn.